Time is four thirty. Pelican Rapids City Council meeting twenty seven, nine twenty one was called to order. I'd ask at this time that if you have not signed in on the clipboard on the end table, please do so before you leave this evening. If you have cell phones, please put them on vibration. We'll call member Daniel.
Councilman Steve Strand.
Here.
Councilman McKenna Ballard.
Here.
Councilman Kurt Merkra.
Here.
Councilman Steve Foster and Mayor Burke Fraser.
Here. Well, I welcome each and every one of you here this evening, those in the council chambers, those that are joining us by virtual technology Zoom. And also our city council meetings are shown on channel fourteen on Wednesday evenings of each week. A few announcements between now and our next city council meeting. Tomorrow, Wednesday, April twenty eighth, ten to eleven a.m. is conversations with the mayor at Historic City Hall. Friday, April thirtieth is Arbor Day, and Pelican Rapids has been recognized as a true City USA participant for many years. Sunday, May ninth is Mother's Day, and our next city council meeting will be on Tuesday, May thirteenth at four thirty P.M. Any other announcements? Any other announcements? Hearing none, if the law please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you. Item number two is citizens' comments. Anyone here for citizens' comments? Hearing none, we'll go to item number three, additions, deletions to the agenda. I have two additions. Item number thirteen is city hall sign usage. Item number thirteen is city hall sign usage. Item number fourteen is planning commission update. Item number fourteen is planning commission update. Any other additions or deletions?
I move to accept with the two additions.
I'll second that.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, I'll signify by saying aye.
Right.
Oppose the same? Motion carried. Item number four is approval of consent agenda. I'll read those items. Four A is approval of council minutes from April thirteenth, twenty twenty one. Item four B is approval accounts payable listing. Item four C is charitable gambling for Humane Society of the Lakes at Tequila Escobar. Item four D is Dunn Township, Dunnville, Lions Raffle, VFW Post five two five two on June thirtieth, twenty twenty one. Item four E is Pelican Rapids Chamber of Congress at VFW Post number five two five two on October ninth, twenty twenty one. Item four F one is a liquor store staff report, which is included in your packet, and also item number four F two is a utilities report, which is included in your packet. Is there a motion to?
I'm going to take approve of the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion second, discussion.
What's the, what are the chamber, what's the Chamber of Commerce doing? They're just, are they mediating?
Discussion, discussion. Hearing no more, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same? Motion carried. We're going to go down to item number six, Highway fifty nine project downtown business roundabout discussion. We have Tom Pace here this evening. Tom, you can have the microphone if you introduce who you have with you and who may be on Zoom joining us from your department or the engineering company.
Thank you, Mayor. Joining me today, Trudy Kardowski is our traffic engineer up in Detroit Lakes. I don't believe anybody is on for Zooming, so just be, as our MNDOT staff here, unless somebody else is on that I don't know about, but. So I guess it came down today. What were the questions?
I missed the name.
I'm sorry.
What is her name?
Oh, sorry. Trudy Kardowski. I spell that?
Oh, just call Trudy.
Yeah, there you go. Yeah, I just, I can go hand on you that I just had her name as on there.
Okay, I got you.
So I know there's been a lot of discussion recently, you know, last years and more recently about the project in twenty twenty four. I mean, a lot of what we want to talk about probably tonight is, you know, our downtown corridor, some of the options. Recently, I won't talk too long here, but we completed what we call a value engineering study is what we, as a design team, we put together a layout which we thought would work fairly well downtown Pelican Rapids, you know, with the city's input as well as the MNDOT staff. A value engineering study takes that and looks, based like a fresh set of eyes on that, things that we could do definitely that maybe we overlooked. And so they put together some proposals, which actually we'll review tomorrow at a different meeting, to look at the proposed proposals and see if they make sense for this project. I'm not sure what you want to accomplish this evening, but I put this here as the question done to answer. Any questions that you guys might have at this time, may go over some layout stuff?
Yeah, basically, the reason Tom's here, and he did pass out something that kind of you guys can look at another time, a little bit more about the project, but the reason he's here is because Councilman Strand had asked to have a discussion. We want to talk around about on the, so the council could have a chance to talk about this, thought come down as you discussing it and be honest about what you think. And if Trudy, if those questions come up, we don't, I don't have an answer for, you don't have an answer for Tom's. And along with that, one of the things that I got from K L J Travis, the engineer, was some things that you see on the screen. This first one is actually the roundabouts, and, you know, you can use that as a reference or a discussion point. I can also go to another screen that kind of shows similar to what we have today, except for the fact that it's the twelve-foot lanes and the ten-foot wide shared use path. And then there's another screen that I can go through that kind of shows of left turn lane too. So, but really, I think, really, the point of tonight was for you guys to have a chance to discuss based on what Councilman Strand wanted to talk about the roundabouts.
Questions? Yes.
Okay. Thank you for being in person, Tom, I appreciate it. I'm absolutely opposed to the roundabouts downtown, and you know that. I'm not out in public a lot because of the pandemic and I, you know, but anyway, everybody, I mean, everyone that I've talked to is really opposed, except a good friend on Sunday said, I really liked that one in D L. M and, by the M and H, I guess, I don't get out much, but I said, really? Because that's the one that other people mentioned, have you been through that one? So my really big concern is there's not enough room downtown, you lose parking, and I don't see a safe way for people, pedestrians, kids, to use the crosswalk, you without lights. So as I've told you in previous meetings, I can't imagine why you can't program those lights. Henderson uses P L Cs that big, and you could program, even if you didn't have sensors in the road, to allow left turns. People come in from Fargo from the north, go downtown, they go toward Maplewood to the lakes, and you stand and watch that in the summer. People get angry, we're not as kind nowadays as a generation, and so they go zipping around the right side, semis included. I just think it's a fright. I just, that's where I'm coming from.
Yeah, that's a good comment. A lot, a lot of questions in there, and I can try and address them. Sure you will help me out, because I'm probably going to lose track of all the stuff I want to say, but when you talk about Pelican Rapids, you see on the screen here, the distance from one oh eight east, one oh eight west, that's not very far, it's only six hundred and fifty feet. So the issue that you mentioned about, you know, if we could add left turn lane, left signal, that will make it a little bit better, but not without a lot better. The issue is the left turners, that's still going to block traffic from what is next to the next intersection. It's not going to be much improvement from what you see today. This is the fact that left turners can't go through because they're sitting there, but once they do go through, the other ones are stopped. Take a look at your recital?
Yeah, yeah.
So if this one here.
Careful touching the screen when I move.
Okay. So if, say this one here, this is, honestly, we've solidified, I haven't seen.
Would it be easier if you go to the left turn lane screen?
That is fine, that is fine. So if this is, you know, left turn lane, and this is making the movements here to go one oh eight east, these cars are stopped.
Yeah.
So once, once these go forward, then they come up to this one, they're going to stop here. These cars are still going to back up all the way to this intersection. It's not going to prove anything.
I disagree, because if you stand out in the summer, one car sitting waiting to turn left with a big long horse trailer, that whole block is plugged up, and they don't, sometimes they will sit there through one light, and then people get really angry.
Right.
So I disagree. If you have, if you let left turn go without anybody coming opposing, I, that's just the way to do it.
Well, once, my question in that scenario then is, once the left turn lane, you let, you hold one and you let, you let the left turns there with auto left turn lane, right?
Yeah.
Because we don't have left turn lane. So let's say the first car wants to turn left, the second car wants to go straight, the third car wants to turn left, you're holding that traffic. So the one would turn left, want to go straight, want to turn left.
Yeah.
At some point, you got to let the opposite side do the same thing.
Right, yeah.
So, so when you do that, now that, that left turn, or that left turn or whatever now switches so that the northbound can do their left turn, that holds the traffic that southbound again now.
But, okay, but there's not a lot of left turning at that intersection, coming from the south.
If you could guarantee every left turn vehicle was there at the time, but you can't, you're going to have a left turn signal, and then it's going to quit, so the straight traffic can go, and also your fifth car back is going to want to take a left, now he's going to sit there and hold out the traffic again.
If the left turn won't quit, I've watched this, there's an intersection by our friends in Ontario, and it stays on. I mean, you can keep going left, some go straight.
So it's like a caution on, on yellow, like the dam in Fargo?
They don't even have an arrow. They, it's a, it's a blinking green light.
You know that's happening, but the opposite direction has to stay stopped.
Right, yeah.
And then when all of a sudden, however, that times out, now that opposite direction gets that same green.
Right.
If there's anybody that wants to turn left now that's being stopped, it's backing everybody up again, because they're not going at the same time.
Exactly right.
I disagree.
That's okay. It's hard to see.
You're supposed to be on my side, Tom.
No, no, no. I, I'm kind of at a neutral stance.
Oh, yeah.
Trying to think through what potentially would be the outcome of us not having a turn lane.
Councilman Foster?
It's kind of unique here, because if you're coming from the south on fifty nine, as Steve pointed out, there's very little left turn to the west.
There's very few cars making the left turn on one oh eight west.
No, this is fifty nine.
On Mill Street, west.
On Mill Street there, yeah.
Fifty nine. There is quite a bit of traffic from the north on fifty nine, making the left going to one oh eight.
Yes.
On the opposite end, there's a lot of northbound traffic on fifty nine, turns left on to.
One oh eight.
One oh eight.
Can you pick a left turn?
And nobody goes east on that, you know?
Sure.
So it's kind of unique there that, and maybe something with the stoplights could be done in that situation, I don't know.
One thing that I noticed, you right turners at the north intersection, there are some people that turn right at the north intersection, and it's actually to turn around.
I have a vehicle here.
So your roundabout would allow that U-turn. At the north intersection, some people turn right. They can witness their turning around so that they can go back south.
But if they had, if they were able to go left, they will go around the block instead of doing that. I'm going to say that's the exception.
Maybe they were looking for a parking spot.
Good luck.
Take a left, go down to the Catholic church, turn around and come back, get a spot on the other side of the road.
Councilman Ballard?
I am out in public every day. I'm driving around, probably more than I should. And realistically, we're talking about traffic backing up in Pelican Rapids maybe three to four times a summer. You're not, I mean, we're making it sound like this is University Avenue in Fargo, that there's cars stopping, and we've got fire trucks running, and it's, it's Highway fifty nine. I will also, I mean, I will, I'll throw it out there, you will never be able to convince me that roundabouts in that situation, either of those intersections, are going to be a good thing. Just, I don't run a huge truck, but I can tell you that going around the big roundabouts on fifty nine, you, there's a little bit of a popper factor involved on some of those, because you, you got cars coming from the other side, and you're, so as I've seen horse trailers going to the park, semi, I mean, I've seen semis meeting, some coming in one oh eight west, other, or excuse me, east, then others turning to go one oh eight east at the same time, and it, I just, you'll never be able to convince me that that's a good idea.
Good comment. How about safety?
Safety?
How about safety? Look, a lot of what MNDOT does with our road.
I, you know, I.
Is amazing for things safer. There's absolutely no question that a roundabout is fifty percent safer than a stoplight. Data proves that time and time and time again.
But.
As a part, as a part of it, Kevin, we think about safety as well.
I understand that, and, but then what data, it seems like we're looking at, we're going with, with the numbers in some area, but we're not going with the numbers in others, because if we continue north on fifty nine, we're starting to screw around with an intersection that there's historically, by the data, hasn't been a lot of accidents there, but we're going to re-lot that whole thing. And, I mean, I, I would also make the argument that regardless of what intersection, what, I mean, if there's a four-way stop sign to a guy standing out in the middle letting one car go at a time, any intersection is dangerous. Anytime you have multi-ton vehicles coming at each other, I mean, we, we talk about numbers, there's, there probably never, there hasn't been an accident up north on fifty nine here for ten years. We could leave the meeting tonight, and there could be four before we get home. That's why they're called accidents. But I, I don't know that, sorry, Steve, I don't know that messing around with the stoplights is going to help or not, but I don't, I don't know if we, in my opinion, it would be leave it as is.
That's a good comment. I mean, I can now, if I had first time two thousand, from the fourteen back then, and from that day, I've been hearing about these intersections, as we MNDOT, about how bad the backups are. I have it for years and years and years, you know, about the near misses and the backups and the side swipes, and there are, are crashes that could intercept this, not a lot of them, but there are some near ends and side swipes. Let's say those that bypassed, they go one way for left turners, you know, so, but you're right though, Kevin, if, you know, the traffic data shows that these are adopting horrible, you know, the level service, it meets may not expectations. You know, as a part of it, it's all, it's only one part though. You factor the traffic mobility, traffic safety, pedestrian interactions, the multimodal impact, impacts of them, it's only a piece of the puzzle.
So I guess my next question is going to be then.
Yeah.
Really, does this, really, I mean, does our decision mean anything?
Absolutely.
Well, no, I hear that, but this is the only thing I ever hear talked about, is, hey, we're talking about roundabouts, okay, but I thought we, I mean, how does, how does the community, do we vote? Do we, I mean, how does that work? How do, how do we get to make the decision, or do we get to make the decision? Is that?
You're, you're a piece of the puzzle, Kevin.
Okay.
Are we a corner? Are we a middle? Are we a piece? Sorry, are we, are we one that can get left on the corner and not?
Right. A lot of part of what we do at MNDOT, of course, like I said before, is the safety aspect of it. We want to make everything as safe as possible, safer than it is today. MNDOT has been trying to do in twenty twenty four, what we do in twenty twenty four is it's going to be there for twenty-five to fifty years, no matter what, what's become and done, we're done, so we can look at the future. And what our data shows is that the intersection is only going to get worse in the future, with the traffic increasing, the multimodals, interactions, the level service is going to decrease in the future. So that's why we're looking ahead, not just twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-four, twenty forty-two, like our data shows, here shows that. But you're right, it's not a horror, it's not the Minneapolis where we have forty, fifty dollars a car, because we have eight thousand cars a day coming through on Highway fifty nine. You know, it's a, it's oversized, overweight mode, we have big loads, we have wide machine, we have a lot of trucks coming through here. So it could take up into the factor, you know, we have pets that want to use our sidewalk, we have bicycles want to use our shared use path. Everything balances out, and we're to compromise on what we do down there. K L J has did a report for us called the ICE report, is intersection control evaluation study, and they've got, had four different options at this intersection. One being a no build as, as it is today, if you believe that it is today. It shows here on this document, which you might have in front of you. On top of page two, we have the four options. A lot of what we're talking about here is queue length. When cars are backed up, it's called a queue length, and it backs up into other intersections. If you look at the far right column, the worst approach, if that's today, this is a level F, which is, basically that car's going to sit there for a hundred and two seconds before it can go. And that, that is today. If you do with the left turn lane option, the worst option is level service E, so that car's going to sit there for sixty-five seconds before it can go. Is that something the city can accept in twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years? Or is that something MNDOT can accept that long? You know, if our cars are sitting there for a minute, two minutes, you know, before they get through, it makes a difference. The third one down is a, the second one down wasn't protected left green arrows, your green one, the third one down is a third, a three lane section. If we do that, we improve, we still have a level service D, so it's, it's still not very good. You know, we want Cs at MNDOT, level service C, maybe the Q distance, and by far, the most successful one is mini roundabouts. And that's why MNDOT recommended a mini roundabouts based on the queue length, waiting the backups, you know, so that's what we, I recommend it. It doesn't mean we're doing it, no, we're recommending it.
And those, the data is generated with your modeling, right, that I was quizzing Travis about?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm not really buying that either. And you talk about safety, Tom.
Yeah.
I understand out in the country, roundabouts will probably eliminate fatalities, except for the video you have, but, so, but in town, pedestrians are my big thing. I don't see a light, I don't see a safe way in the summer when it's crazy for people to cross without any kind of a signal.
Signals and stop, and they work, but they are so dangerous. People still run stoplights, people still run stoplights, it's impossible to run a roundabout. There was a crash here a year, a couple of years ago, on the one oh eight east one, where a left turner hit, hit a pet at a stabilized intersection. That person had her head right away, the left turner still hit him.
Yeah.
So if you see in the map here, the pedestrians, you know, they got to walk over here, they got to walk, oops, sorry, let me brush that. They got to walk around here, they got to cross down here, so the cars can see them. They're making that turn, and they're in front of them. Over here, they got cars coming around, cars are going slow. Cars have to go slow in a roundabout, they can't go, go eighty, fifty miles an hour, they can't have a stoplight, stop sign or stoplight. They have to go fifty miles an hour, or else they're going to, they're going to crash into something else. But, but yeah, they're going to come through, and they, they have to go slow, which is huge.
But I mentioned at a previous meeting, people, you know, in hurry, they're thinking, they're not going to walk way down, and they're going to scoot across the shortest distance. That's what I think.
The short distance is down here. It is, this is a long pay, T payment, they might cross there, but, you know, they shouldn't, but they still will. People still cross over here, they'll still cross over here, they'll cross where they want to cross. We can't control where they cross. We direct them so they can get across there safely. We'll block pad signs, you know, a lot of stuff there to direct them there. There are sidewalks, there are trails through these crosswalks. They have to go further, that is correct.
Yeah.
But it's, it's a short crossing across the highway, it's not in the middle of the cars that are doing around here, they're down here and they're crossing.
Tom, how far are those crosswalks from that intersection?
They don't have a good symbol top of my head, but it's, it's down every ways. You know, so it's a little further to walk, work back, so. Another aspect of the mini roundabouts versus signals and everything else is the cost. I mean, that's a cost, everything we do has a cost to it. A signal system's going to cost you two hundred and fifty thousand dollars or more to install at one time, you know, maintain it every year, that's the city's cost, you know, for painting, that sort of thing. I mean, having the electricity, you know, to maintain them, so there's a cost to signal systems. Roundabouts, you're building one time, and you're not. You know, if there's no, no signal system, you're not going to paint them every five years, you're not going to change light bulbs in them, you know, you build them. The cost is cheaper for a mini roundabout. The, the, the city pays for a quarter of the one on the, on the north one, the county pays for a quarter of the one in the south one. MNDOT pays for three quarters of the roundabouts. Same thing with speedlights. So the cost part of it is in there as well. Another piece of the puzzle.
On the crosswalks, is there a possibility you could put in push button pedestrian lights?
Possibly.
I mean, is that?
It's possible, yeah.
Would that do anything, or, you know what I mean, do they work? I, we have a couple sets in town, and sometimes people stop, and still some people run, but all of those people paying attention.
Right. Obviously, we still, because of the people that are visually impaired or, you know, there's still being some push buttons. I'm not sure where they all go, even with all those trees. Are there any, try like?
I don't know, just pedestrians signs, not the traffic.
The buttons, the push buttons.
Just the, yeah, the line, the walk, the flashing block sign, you know, like we have in front of high school, we have three pairs. We have the high school, big church at Fifth Avenue and one set.
That is an option. I wouldn't suggest that you go with that right away. I think Pelican Rapids has done really a good job, and they've been very proactive in their industry signing and things like that. I would rather see those yield for pets signs kind of down low, you know, since there won't be a traffic signal, the drivers aren't looking up, they're looking right ahead, and, but there's the benefit that you're going to see accidents, and you're not going to help with the traffic signal, leaving a person right there, and only having to cross one wave of traffic at a time, to have a refuge island in the middle.
Oh, sure.
But I don't believe it's recommended to have that flashing beacon as a start. If there were an issue, I think it could be had, but it's not, it's not something that we want.
Tom, looking ahead on this twenty twenty four Complete Streets project, is there a date that the decision has to be made, and this is what we're going to do?
Between now and end of December.
End of December?
Everything is locked in, everything locked in.
This coming December?
This coming December, right. The job is only two and a half years away from being built.
So again.
It's being built in twenty twenty four, so plans are done in two and a half years.
So I'm, I'm assuming we're going to be having other community input meetings?
Absolutely.
I was, I attended the last one on whatever, Google meets or whatever it was. And Pelican, Pelican Rapids is, is, we were talking about it last night, we, we're, we have a lower income strata, but we're also an elderly community. And I can tell you that when, I mean, for me, I was, I couldn't, I couldn't access this on the, on the tab, my tablet for city council, I couldn't access the meeting on my computer because my computer was too old. So I ended up on the meeting on my wife's phone, because even my iPhone wouldn't. So I'm not as young as I used to be, but I'm not as old as I should be, no.
I got you.
What I'm seeing is the elderly community in, or population of our community, they see, oh, Zoom meeting, and done, pass on it, I'll read it in the press, and complain about it later, because I didn't get a decision, you know, I mean. So I guess if we have any community meetings going forward, I would say we, it has to be in person.
Yeah.
And I, I mean, I.
I'm lying with you just because of COVID.
Right.
MNDOT's rules are pretty strict. We just recently got permission even to come here tonight, Trudy and I, but our next one will be in person, and now we're, it's, we're starting to get things in the right direction, so.
So then again, how do we, between now and December, do we get, do we, do we vote? Do we rock, paper, scissors? I mean, how do we, how do we make the decision?
Yeah, I mean, the city council is one, one unit.
Piece of the puzzle.
Exactly right. It's a big piece of the puzzle, very important that you're, you're a project partner. I mean, we're in Pelican Rapids, now because of, because of Pelican Rapids, MNDOT would not be here for until twenty twenty-eight or so. MNDOT will not be here until 2028 or so, because of the city asked MNDOT to come forward and do a project, so that's why we're here, talking with you guys. You know, so everything, we're working, you're a project partner, the city council will make a decision to accept our design or not accept it. And if you don't accept it, then we'll try and tweak it and adjust it so that eventually you can accept it. And if you don't, then we have to go down a different path, which I don't want to address tonight, but that's, that's down the road a little ways. If we, if it comes to the end where we can't agree on something, then our partnership might not be here. You know, we might, we might step back and, and take a different approach. So it's, it's, it's not a threat, that's just how the process works. You know, I've never had a project where the city has not agreed to it yet, but it takes a lot of give and take between both, both parties. You know, we'll see what's best for the community, and of course, this is a MNDOT trunk highway, you know, going through town, so you want to do what's best for the, the traveling public as well, so. It is a balancing act between the city, county, and MNDOT, and everybody in town, so.
So there's a possibility, if there could be no agreement, we may not get some of the other amenities done which we are hoping to get done, correct?
A low, a low possibility, that's something you don't want to talk about. I mean, I'm, I'm confident we could work together on a project that's going to benefit the city and MNDOT and, and all that.
Also a possibility?
When they put the one up in Detroit Lakes by M&amp;H gas station, didn't they put in a trial one first?
No, not in Detroit Lakes, we didn't.
There's also, I mean, there's not, in my opinion, the one by M&amp;H in Detroit Lakes is very similar to this, because if you keep going towards the pavilion, there's another one probably that far away, maybe a little bit closer.
Yeah, a little further.
A little further?
As a baseball diver.
A little bit further.
Just passed it.
Well, we had some discussion at one point about putting in a trial one here, and I think that would be an excellent idea if you just tried it during the summer.
Yep. Our plan is to do that in June, actually. We're trying to get that figured out right now, we're, we have a meeting monthly for, geez, about eight, nine months now, trying to get one to work in town here. Ideally, you'd love to build one on 59, but it'd be tough to do because it's, we have to do some work with the sidewalk, it wouldn't fit currently with the sidewalk configuration. So we're looking at a demo project, we're calling it, and we're looking at some parking lots in town that we want to strive for temporary roundabout, you know, bring some trucks in, snowplows, buses, have people drive them, you know, chemicals, drivers, trucks through there, then we can see, see that they actually work, and, and they, they will work. I mean, they're, they're slower, I mean, there's, they're not a full blown roundabout, but the curb in the middle is mountable, so trucks can make that corner, you know, so that's what, you know, there are multiple center islands, so people can make them. After a town like Pelican Rapids, you know, with less than, you know, if anything, less than fifteen thousand cars a day, they work really well. And Pelican is way below that, that threshold of mini roundabouts working on a trunk highway system, or any highway system.
Would it, would it work up by the plant, where the, the 59 is wider, and there's no sidewalks?
To do a demonstration?
Yes.
For all of the proper signing and everything like that, that goes into something like this, I think it's better to do it in a parking lot situation, where the city has to be kept up overnight, you have to ensure that all of the signs stay up, all of the temporary tubes, so ideally, it would be in a parking lot situation.
And for the demo project, I'm not going to get in, we want to do both. We want to do a mini roundabout someplace in town, and actually build what we just, we were building 24, someplace in downtown. Take a quarter of it, wherever that is, and put tubes up and sandbags and stuff to actually demonstrate, twelve foot driving lanes, ten foot parking lanes, shared use paths, everything we want to build in 24, we want to do a demo project this summer as well, to show the city council and the city residents what it'll, it'll look like in 2024. So it's a two-step demo project, you know, so a good idea, we, we definitely want to do it. And I think we're really close to getting funding for it to do that temporarily, so we're trying to find a location for it right now, so it will work. So yeah, it's something we definitely want to do. We did one, you did one, Penny, how's it streak? We didn't do any roundabout, did we?
No.
Okay, thank you. Yeah.
You're looking at June?
We need to for funding, so funding for our demo project expires end of June, so that's why we're pushing our BE study, and we're pushing for getting like our layout concept actually done by them, so we can build it and see how it works. If it doesn't work, then we can make adjustments to it. You know, the, the city is going to actually sign, it's called municipal consent for this project, and that deadline is, is end of January next year, which will have a signed approved layout, and the city will sign off on partnering with MNDOT, and the cost will be figured in, and, you know, anticipate a cost, with some costs the city, MNDOT County, all that will be ironed out yet this year, and then to give, you know, KLJ two years of design the same. It's going to be hard to design, I mean, it's a big project, we're talking twenty-five to thirty blocks of high level detail design, it's really, really hard. So they need time to do it. That's, we need time to buy right of way, environmental impacts, you know, avoid trees, avoid painting walls, do some bridge work, a lot of stuff you can figure in here, so we need time to do that. This is really crucial, the next three, four, five months to get our layout, so we're all happy with it. So yeah, and if the city council does not jump on board with MNDOT, then we'll, we'll do some different stuff, but I think we will. I'm confident that we'll gather a plan that we're up, that you guys will all accept and join MNDOT with, and vice versa.
Any other questions for Tom or Trudy?
Can I do, can I do one more? Okay. So crossings are my big thing, in front of a high school is really dangerous. It's scary to stop for kids because somebody will whip it all the rights out of you, and there's little lights on, I mean, I don't know, is that a state thing, or?
Little lights.
They kind of?
Through the state, but we, we installed them.
I mean, they just kind of twinkle, they don't?
They need more, what we need there is more street light, more lighting.
Okay. And then I asked Brian, and I thought he was asking you about that south intersection. First one coming into town from the south, south town, what's?
10th Avenue. 10th Avenue and 59.
Yeah, I mean, I've watched numerous families try to get across there, and, I mean, they 're going fifty-some miles an hour when they come from the south. And so there's nothing we could do, that's what Brian asked you, there's nothing to do in the meantime to try to protect them.
You're talking about people that cross the street?
Yes, the pedestrians.
And crossing there?
Yes, yep.
The weird job coming up there in 2027, I know, so it's still ways out. See, our job is, we're in the city utility replacement project, so if you go from Fair Cup to Ninth and all of that stuff, our job is in, we're in that one. And we'll take off from the high school and go south in 2027, and look at that area, with sidewalk or bike trail, whatever, it'll be down there. But in the meantime, I don't know what we can do down there.
So, so I push?
South townways.
Is there a crosswalk?
There's not a crosswalk down there.
See, and that's what my request, I mean, is so dangerous, so.
I, I don't know that a controlled crosswalk would, would be any benefit there, just due to the speed of the traffic. They're, they're accelerating going out, and they're slowly decreasing coming in, and they just, they're not looking, they're looking at everything up here and not paying attention here. And their, and the speed is a huge thing there.
Yeah, we got, Don had a question.
Well, I thought, but at one point, I thought we were able to, when we wanted to ask, if we had crosswalks, we could. Is it possible to add a crosswalk there and put signage up? Whether, whether MNDOT can or can't do it, or whether the city can or can't do it. If the city wanted to put crosswalk signs up there and put, put a crosswalk in, what's preventing us from doing it now? Other than the seat, speed is still an issue, but what's preventing us from doing that now?
MNDOT. I mean, it's, that is, that is what I ran into.
But could we get clearance to do that?
They have not given me clearance in five years, so.
I thought this was clearance, it sounds like it was clearance.
Sixty down there, or fifty?
It's forty, they moved us to sixty.
Right.
When you get by Lake Freezing, but that is, like I say, people are still traveling above forty.
So the industry pedestrian signs that we use now, recommendation for that is that the speed limit's thirty-five.
Or less, right.
And that's probably what people are covering.
So all we can do is put a stoplight up.
Our roundabout would take care of that.
There we go. I'm just, just say that.
We could be the small city with the most roundabouts.
So I pushed for these markers at the crosswalk, what do you call them, Brian? The things you haven't put out yet?
Ped signs.
We have to wait till May first, or what is it?
I have to permit those every year, yes, and it's not until May that I can.
You know, okay, so, I'll quit being crabby.
Okay, anything else, I'll care to wrap it up here.
Yeah. I just wanted to kind of point out to the council a couple of things that have come up regarding this, and ask, you know, kind of Tom a bug, Tom a bug the part of it too. Up here, there's a discussion with, with the restaurant up here about having a drive-through window. And so, based on this configuration, if he puts a drive-through window in here, and traffic comes in, comes around, picks up their food, would there be an issue with him coming up? Say no, thank you.
It's something we can look into, I mean, they come around the corner, they're going slow, you know, the roundabout's speeds are slow, so it could work, I mean, you don't want to fix our business.
Right.
You know, if that worked, but I'd look into it and see, you know, maybe be right out only, sort of possibly, sort of thing.
Okay.
You know, the grid, look into it a little further, obviously, maybe not.
Okay, so that was, that was one of the things that was called into question. The other one was, obviously, Rehab Plus, this building right here, has a lot of senior clients that come in to have rehabilitation services done with them after medical procedures. So the parking in front of this was huge. And based on the positioning of the roundabouts that this shows, that parking in front of this, these buildings here is all alone there. So parking really shouldn't be an issue in a roundabout scenario for Rehab Plus, or a lot of the business of downtown, because it would still show a lot of parking. Yeah, this building here, there's a little bit of parking, this parking here, is it possible that there, with, is there enough room with the roundabout right there to, to maybe take away the diagonal parking, but have some of that little parking there?
Yeah.
Potentially. So that brings some of the parking back into it. Obviously, down on this end, the drugstore loses some, but they've got some. Also here, with this, this business here, in the barbed building, they own these lots here, they could create their own off-street parking. Parking shouldn't be an issue for them. Don, obviously, at the drugstore, has a parking lot here, he does lose a little bit, yes. And Crackleburgs in this scenario, they lose a little bit up front, but we still see that there is parking that goes all the way over the bridge in front of the, the old coffee shop there. So I just wanted to point some things out, especially as it relates to, and for you guys to think about, because he really does want to put in that drive-through, and point out the parking that the roundabout does have in itself.
Yeah, parking is always a big concern, which I was talking to Brian, sorry. But every party we do in firm settings, you know, parking is concerned for everybody, and we don't want it to obviously get way more than we have to. But, you know, keep in mind that if the city wants a shared use path on both sides, if they want it and stuff, they have to sacrifice some things. They can't always fit everything in that we want, you know, so that's something to keep in mind as well, so.
By limiting that parking, it includes the visibility for the pedestrians? You know, people can get lost behind those parked cars, so by this layout showing that there's not parked cars, but there includes that visibility of the person parked cars.
Okay, well, thank you. I know we'll be meeting many times in the future, and we'll look forward to the public meeting, and also the demonstration project in June, which people can see it up close and personal, always different than looking at a screen.
Yeah, thanks for coming in, Bruce. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, Tyler. Let's go up to item number five, Senior Citizen Center discussion. Don, do you want to introduce?
In front of me was set a copy of the minutes from the senior centers, their last meeting, so it kind of, it shows the action that they took. And so, what we're, what we want to try and accomplish tonight is, in a sense, that action is the senior center saying, we would like to give the building back to the city, or to the city. And if you guys are, are in favor of actually doing that, I think it means just taking action tonight to do that, which would, which would accept that, that transfer. And then at that point, Attorney Larson would basically start working on a quick claim deed to get that accomplished. And so, I, I think with leaving it at that, I think Greg has some things to say about also accomplishing another meeting with the seniors to kind of prove the minutes and stuff, but I'll pass it over to you, Mayor.
So you're looking for a motion for the city to formally accept the properties of the senior center?
Yes, I think that's what the seniors are basically wanting to do, and if you guys want to accept the building, if you want to discuss some things about it first grade, there's a lot of things we have to put in the motion before we can do things down there, but yeah.
When they made the presentation, that, at the, few meetings ago, or however many meetings ago, you, or you had said that they needed to prepare a letter? I mean, does, do the minutes of the meeting qualify as that?
Yes. We needed something from before that officially stepped, you know, showed that they wanted to do that, not that those minutes do. But there is some conversation based on my laws and what they've done before that, and Greg can address this too, that they, they have to do one more meeting to have them minutes actually approved, right?
Correct. Greg Larson, city attorney, mayor, council, what Don is saying is exactly what he and I talked about. I think my, my question for the council was, does the city want the property back? If it does, it certainly can take action to accept the actions reflected in the Senior Citizen Center Board minutes dated in April. What I didn't see in the meeting minutes is, is the Senior Citizen Center, are they no longer offering any sort of social service, social programs, or recreational? So, so all of those services have ceased?
No. They've sort of ceased since the pandemic. There's still meals and.
We're going, we're going to do that.
The programs such as Meals on Wheels will, would continue from there.
That's not a social program?
No.
The only reason I ask, it's just more of semantics versus anything, because if, if there were no recreational or social programs that were coming out of the Senior Citizen Center, then, then there's really no thinking about it. The city's agreement with the senior center contemplates the senior center giving it back, and it's really not a, yeah, we'll take it, or no, we'll take it. It's, that's part of the agreement. If there's programs that are going to continue out of there, but on a much lower level in terms of the number of programs and things like that, what I'm looking for clarification on is if that's the case, then to me, I look at the city just accepting it back, even though technically, there still may be some programs going on for senior citizens at that center. Would that be a more accurate?
Like, also on Mark Ruff, so it's just Meals on Wheels.
Right, and that's not run by them.
Okay.
The understanding, I think, at least for me, sitting on the council here, is that the Senior Citizen Board of Directors, Senior Citizen Center Board, is going to be dissolved entirely and have no claim or stake to the building or meetings or anything, or rentals of, for, you know, parties like they used to do. None of that will be available any longer because of the dissolution of their board entirely.
Let's, we had a meeting today, city personnel, Nutrition Services Incorporated, Local Foods, Local Places, and we talked about all this. Don, do you want to recap that?
Yeah, basically, we talked about the building, we talked about the Meals on Wheels program, and that's really the only social program that, that's going on down there. And so, the reason that Nutrition Services Incorporated was there, was to share how they, how they work the program, so that when we take the building back, if that's what the council chooses to do, we will just work with them, and we have an agreement that we will be putting in place to continue that program with NSI. So that's the only social program, and it's just basically them moving from an agreement with the Senior Citizen Board to an agreement with the city to have that same program and same service provided.
And at this time, it includes no in-house dining?
Right, because of.
Right, right.
So we've got a real, I think, a really good handle on that program, which is the only program, senior program down there, we've really got a really good handle on how they work, they'll continue to work in exactly the same way. City, the only, the only involvement the city will have will be the agreement that they continue to operate our building down there, that they do right now, it shouldn't affect anything.
So they, I'm sorry, Mayor.
If we accept this this evening, when officially does, what action has to be taken to officially is its property of the city of Pelican Rapids? is its property of the City of Pelican Rapids?
I would suggest that the Senior Citizens Board just approve the, you know, like it does every meeting, approve the April meeting minutes. And really, if the meeting is for that sole purpose, then I, to me, this is enough to trigger the reversion back to the city that was originally agreed upon in 1978 between the city and the senior center. So...
As soon as that meeting takes place, then it's officially the city?
As soon as the Board of the Senior Center approves the reading of the minutes, then that would be officially in its record, and to me, that would trigger dance back to the city. And just one follow-up on, Don, what you had talked about on this recent meeting today. Does that mean that moving forward, for all intents and purposes, the Senior Citizen Center is not going to be incurring any costs or expenses related to anything moving forward in relation to the, to this center, correct? Would that be correct?
Yeah, the city will assume all expenses.
Then for sure, to me, the elements are met. And because there's already an agreement in place, technically, I suppose the city doesn't even have to take action to approve it, because if the senior citizen fails to do certain things, including just continues to pay for any utilities or anything that goes on with regard to that building, there's an automatic reversion clause in that 1970s agreement that triggers the requirement that it convey it back to the city. But on a practical matter, I would, I would recommend that the council tonight, just go ahead and, if it desires to acquire the building, to just record it in a motion form. So if someone is willing to make a motion to accept the Senior Citizens Building real estate, I think that would be all that's needed. And then, everything after that, the contingencies would be met by and through the board meeting of the senior center, and then that action would trigger the signing of the deed back to the city.
Is there such a motion?
Some moving.
Second?
Second.
Motion second. Discussion? 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 Hearing none, all favor, sign of, am I saying aye?
Aye.
Polls the same? Motion carried.
Aye, it's counsel.
Okay, thank you. Don?
While we're talking about this, I just kind of wanted to give the council also an update on some of the things we talked about briefly down there. The, the NSI, basically, the Meals on Wheels program right now, like they mentioned, is not in-person. And NSI actually put the program together the way it is today based on Minnesota Governor's emergency orders for COVID. So they will dictate, NSI will dictate, when and at what point the seniors can start having in-person meals again, not the city, following the governor's guidelines. As far as that also, when we looked at things down there, there's some things that we need to look into next week or whenever regarding the community center aspect of it. Yes, it's a facility that we can use for that, but there's some things we've got to look into. And one of them, obviously, is having a, some type of guidelines in place, COVID executive order-type guidelines that we don't have right now because we didn't have a community center. So we have, that has to be created and developed. As well as looking at, in the state that the building's in right now, you know, it was a senior citizens building, now it's a public building. So the rules and regulations change on ADA and all that stuff too. So we have to look into all that, and we'll kind of update council, maybe at the next meeting when we have some inspections and some other input on, on what needs to be done in that building before we can start using the community center, or that type of thing, so.
Okay, thank you, Don. Moving on, item number seven. Dam removal or river restoration project, and we have, we're saying, Greg, you're from Houston Engineering, and there's other personnel behind masks that I can't tell who they are.
Howard Fort and Hannah Rollins.
Okay. Glad to be here.
Is Amanda on the phone?
Yes, Amanda's online.
I'm here.
Okay. Is there anybody else? Amanda, besides you?
Uh, not, not with, we were telling you, I think Nick Cluver, Fisher, is also on the phone.
Okay.
On our agenda, under this agenda item, we have a few bullet points. Who is going to lead us through those bullet points so we stay on course?
Can I basically suggest that we've got some stuff on the screen? And maybe the thing to do would have Rick explain the different plans sections that we have on here? Okay, and we can do that, and then maybe go back, or as we're going through them, and we're on that screen, talk about the built.
Okay.
So with that...
Yeah, just to give you guys a little bit of background, so we've been meeting with the PNR, you know, several times this spring and late winter here. And we made quite a bit of progress on the concept of the design. We figured it was time to come to the city council and, and show you what we came up with. Don and Mayor Fraser have been involved in a lot of the meetings. But we do have a couple of concepts to show you. And the idea is, is to kind of get your opinion on where we're at. And eventually, we want to get to the point where we can go to a final design. And more importantly, we do want to get the environmental assessment worksheet work done, which takes, takes some time, takes a few months. So the biggest thing, biggest hang-up right, right at this point is, you know, what exactly does the project footprint look like? So, so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Hannah, and she can show you what we've came up with so far. A few, a few other slides, start working.
Yeah, can you go to the, like, the plan and the study?
Yep, hopefully.
Yeah, so this is the plan view of the, do I need to speak into this, or can I just?
You can, you can move wherever you need to.
Yeah, yeah.
If you feel, go up there, go up there.
Okay.
Pick up just a little bit, though.
Okay. So this is the concept view of where the rapids would be placed in relation to where the dam is right now. So, I mean, that's a pretty, and pretty long rapids, but the goal is to have it stop before it gets into the vicinity of the buildings down there, but also not have it extend too far into the reservoir. So this is kind of, it seemed to us the most natural location for the rapids, for the length and height that it needed to be. Just the colors, in case you can't see, is just where we would be filling or excavating. And then Pelican Pete would probably, it doesn't have to, he doesn't necessarily have to move into this location, but we would have to move him up and out of the rapids a little ways. So that's part of, I know that's a big deal here in the city, so. Yeah, that's kind of just this concept view. And then if you want to go to maybe one of the dredging sites. So we came up with two options for dredging. This is the first one. So down here, we would end up excavating some of the sediment that's accumulated in the reservoir so that the fishing pier that currently sits down here would still be usable. These, both of these sites would have two to three feet of water in them normally. This is mainly so that those parcels that currently have access to the, to a pool would continue to have access to a pool. Both of these, since they're offset from the main channel of the river, wouldn't require too much maintenance at all. So that's a, that's a highlight. And then the second one was just mainly identical. We would just remove this dredging area. It would be less sediment removal, probably a little bit lower cost, but then this fishing pier wouldn't necessarily be usable anymore, so. So those were our, a couple of our dredging options, and then I think the last.
So Hannah, with option one, you could use the pier, and option two, you could not use the pier?
Yeah, I guess the pier, I mean, there would be an option to maybe move the pier closer to the river, but it, it would be better to have it sit where it is so that it's more of a backwater instead of, you know, directly moving river. I don't know, do people have questions, I?
Would you dredge it deep enough if the cattails aren't going to grow in there?
Yeah, so that's kind of maybe a Howard question.
Because it's a, it's a hard bottom, once you get to that point too. And if you're going to have cattails growing, right now, there would be cattails growing on your shoreline right now if you, if there was a cattail issue there. And, and, you know, right now, you don't have a cattail which you, right, those areas. But that, where you're going to be doing that dredging and stuff, it was actually going to be deep enough that it, you know, cattails don't like too deep of water either, because they will actually flood themselves out then too if it gets too deep. But for the most part, once you clear off anywhere they're scattered there, it's a hard bottom, the majority of that, so. Like I said, there, there would be cattails, you would see cattails growing already on the shoreline. You are, we were out there today, you were seeing a little bit of, there's wild rice now starting to grow on the, some of those areas. That wild rice is from, you know, over time, of some of that softer sediments and stuff like that. But that's growing on that, the muckier bottom, but underneath that is, is the solid base under there again, so. And that is, again, that's something, a maintenance thing potentially too. If you do get, if you do get cattails that you need to make path to or whatever, in situations, you can get permits and everything else. Example is down in, in Fergus Falls, Lake Alice. There were residents that didn't like the cattails in some of those areas there, where, where the city was able to get a permit, and, you know, either treat it with, with, you use rodeo, just a, it's just like ground it up, or you can, the other option is, is if you put those cattails and you put water over top of them, again, they'll flood out too, but that's another option there too. But I don't foresee any issue with cattails in those areas, so.
Hi, this is Amanda. I, I remember from our technical team meeting that the dredged area is going to be three feet deep, is that right, Hannah?
Yeah.
And, and Detective Luther, I think he said that over the three feet, they did not have concern with cattails.
Last couple. The first dredge area, are losing any shoreline? I mean, is that the same as it is now, like?
Yeah, so the, the excavation would stop at the, where the grass starts now.
Okay. And tell me again, what is the lowering, what's the total drop of the water?
Yeah, so, I think it's at around 13.08, and we're lowering the normal pool to around 13.01. So it'd be like 16, 17 feet lower.
I'm thinking about the suspension ridge.
Oh, sorry.
Well, I mean, I just, you know...
Yeah, there's a, there's a blue, and it looks at the pool, is it blue light? Probably can't see it very well.
Yeah, so the blue line would, outlines what the pool will look like after the rapids are installed. And that should have painted on the same color, but this is.
It's a little bit smaller, because what you're looking at is a picture, area of picture there where it was taken when we had drawdown for the, the study we did a couple of years ago.
Okay. Thank you.
My question is, with, because of the suspension bridge, is it possible to dredge more, expand that red further through the expansion, the suspension bridge to create even a wider pool?
Yeah, so right now, the, the width of this blue line would likely be slightly wider just because we're going to have actual flow going through here once the river, or once the dam is removed. And so if you look at the width of the river upstream and downstream of the dam, we usually see a width between 16 and 18 feet wide. So we do anticipate that this would almost dredge itself out, which is why we kept the dredging to this area, just to let the river do what it wants to do naturally.
So the width of the flow underneath the suspension bridge, can we sort of like make that as what size we want it?
Yeah, so I mean, it'll be, I think if you were to let it do it naturally, it would probably end up being around 16, 18 feet wide under there.
What's it now?
Um, I think this whole width here?
How much, yeah, what's the width of the river underneath the bridge now?
Um, well, the reservoir is like...
Just scale it there.
100 to 200, 150 feet wide maybe?
Yeah.
180 feet?
It's quite, it's quite a, it's not a big one, actually, that was the line.
So the pool line is the shoreline, which, you know, you expect it to be, right, under the bridge?
Yeah.
It's what the shoreline would look like now if we park the water that elevation anymore.
Yeah.
But like Hannah was saying, like, even this, even this area is going to get wider, at 60-some feet maybe? It's kind of a natural process, so it's hard to tell you exactly. But like Hannah was saying, it's, it's usually has, has to do with the river then. Typically, the river will take the shape of the channel upstream and downstream. So there's some pretty wide pieces of the river upstream and downstream. So we do think, over time, this is going to get wider and wider. Right now, this is pretty, pretty narrow here, but I would bet this thing probably getting twice as big as like shoreline. What's, what's the, this, I don't know, you guys can, this was kind of a river starting to downcut. If you guys could see it, like, the rock started to come up out of the sediment. It was starting to be downcut at this period. But it was still in a state of transition, so it hadn't really widened out to that point of equilibrium where it goes back to naturally looking through it.
Yeah, and people aren't real happy about changing. There are people that said they won't come back again, you know, but, so.
They've got kids who won't.
Yeah, so.
But this, this leads to one of the points later on that we'll discuss then too about, about when to do the drawdown. So by doing a drawdown earlier, it's going to expose some of these areas a little bit more, and we're going to see what that river does prior to even doing excavating and everything else. That's going to help us, it's going to help Houston Engineer then too, to see those areas and say, okay, what did that river do? Where are we at with the suspension bridge and everything else? And all that stuff can be, you know, tweaked a little bit here and there because we finally saw what that river did itself naturally. So now where do we modify it and, and get it to, you know, to closer to this plan too? So like I said, once we get to that bullet point, that's one of the bullet points of the drawdown. That's going to really help out when this comes.
Thank you.
Good point.
So one of the, one of the things that we have to give them direction on is, is the dredging options. So we have basically this one, where we get to basically still have water, right, to where the fishing pier is now, versus this one that shows no dredging down here. So if you had, if you had to choose one of those two, which one would you prefer to see?
Can you, can you go back to, right, that picture? So if, if this is dredged out by the fishing pier, does that move the nor, or the, excuse me, the south shore, shoreline in?
No.
The other side?
Other side of the river from that, yeah.
It would move that south shore.
It would?
No.
No, so that would still stay at all, but it would create the bigger pool that we'd like to see?
Yeah.
So I think.
There'd be more sho, more shoreline available on the city's property?
Well, more than there is now.
Yeah.
I think the question is, we want as much water coming up against our park as we can in that, that pool, the mill pond, so to speak. That, that's what I would choose personally, rather than the other slide.
Yep.
Yeah.
So it's basically, if you want to do all, you want water in there?
Water, water.
And that's, that's going to be a neat feature, Ashley, when you consider that you've got, you've got rapids going up there. So fish moving up through that rapids, there's your first stop. So you have a fishing gear, there's your first stop for any fish kind of potentially going up there. You've got a little bit more of a hole, they're going to sit there and rest there a little bit. So when it comes to fishing-wise, that's actually going to open up some more opportunities for fish movement. Same way with that other dredged up spot a little bit further up. Again, those fish move up the river, they've got a little bit more of a resting area again. Granted, this is not a hard flowing river, but it does provide those opportunities because you're, you are going to see more, you're going to see more bass, northern pike, stuff like that moving through that area now, because you've got potential river, so.
And then, so you guys know the dredging up, you got what they're looking for. Okay, and then on this picture, one of the things that need to be a little bit talked about so they have some sense of what we're thinking, and she had mentioned Pelican. She had mentioned Pelican, Pelican Pete right here has to get relocated. And so what this kind of option shows is to take him and just move him back as part of the project too. So Pelican, Pelican Pete would still stay, you know, we see it kind of still staying in the same area, just moved back away from the water area a little bit.
To the north.
To the north. To the north, so straight north to some extent.
So my question there is, you walk down a hill to get to Pelican Pete, so is that hill get cut, cut out? Or?
Part of the steps are still there, you're just eliminating part of the bottom, instead of those steps going down there.
So it doesn't go all the way, we're not, we're not talking, we're talking moving back ten feet?
Well, from where it is, it looks like probably your fifty feet.
Fifty feet.
And then I just chose a spot, so it's really up to you guys where you
Yeah, I mean, we could move it south, we could move it
Well, I know, I'm just wondering, because of the bank, I mean, you're talking more excavation and retaining wall and that kind of business, and stairs. So I mean, if it gets moved back too far, all of a sudden, now you're messing with trying to get it level on a bank and
There's nothing that says we can't move anywhere that page.
So, you know, one idea that came up was that, we didn't know what you guys wanted to do with the mill house. And if, if that's something that you're thinking about removing, maybe it could go there too on the other side of the river.
So then she's talking about the mill house, but that's one of the other things, this goes away.
Does it have to go away?
Yes. It has to go away because basically, we want as much width here as we can get. And you showed, they showed the, you know, the fill and stuff that comes in here. Also underneath this, this house, and maybe going through there is those emergency shoots for the dam, those got to get removed. And so to pull all that stuff out of there as part of the dam removal, the building goes away. The building isn't needed.
So
To be honest with you, there's nothing good about that building right now.
So Pelican Pete, so Pelican Pete could slide over to here.
Well, that'd be big.
Yeah, no, I
It'd be very visible from Broadway, unlike it is now.
And Kevin, if you think about it a little bit too, so we're using that red too, a lot of that is the dam dike itself. That, that's excavation, so some of that is already going to be coming off. Where the green is actually, you're getting filled in. So that, that'll help too with, what you're saying too is how much are you going to cut into the bank here to go? Things are going to level up a little bit more, so when you take Pelican Pete back up a little bit more, we're already going to have to grade that anyways at some point. So you're not going to be cutting as much, but you do have the fill right there too because you're cutting, that's part of that dam off because you don't, you don't need that leveling anymore because you've got the river now. So it's not holding anything or detecting anything. So it's going to create a better visual up the river and everything else for, for that aspect too. I don't think it's critical that you guys, did you know where Pete goes tonight? We just wanted to know where that's going to move.
Is, is the elevation of the slab that Pelican Pete is on, is that, is that going to be planned so his feet are always dry?
Right.
So it doesn't flood up on him?
I don't think it's a safety issue out of it.
Okay.
It's been happening for these years.
You're not going to be able to catch fish though if we move them up too high.
In years.
Amanda, you take questions because I can't see who's got their hand up here.
So one of the traditions here is standing on fifty-nine on the bridge and taking a photo of the Pelican. So, you know, if it's too far, you know, too far back, it's that building, it's going to block that view, or that would be?
Yeah, you almost need to draw like a, like a view frame here to see
Yeah, so that would be something. Can I go up there?
Sure.
So is this, are these the, is that the eventual width that would probably be the, the bridge?
That's, that's pedestrian bridge, ten feet block.
So how, how long, what's that span?
I think it's, I think I saw, trying to measure about a hundred feet.
How long is the suspension bridge?
A hundred feet.
But this will be a clear span bridge.
It'd be a good, good roadway project.
Move that suspension bridge over both
But the consensus is we want Pelican Pete to stay on the same side of
Yeah.
Or he is now.
I, I think should leave that option open because it can be moved over here so that there's a direct, so it's easy to see peak of rapids from the, from the bridge deck.
Right now, when you, you try to see the Pelican from Broadway, there's trees blocking it.
Yeah, there
Those trees really aren't going to go away.
Oh, well, they're, he's going to be
They're going to stay.
He's going to be hit more yet.
Right, and so if we move him back on that side, he's going to be very much hit. You won't see him from Broadway at all.
No, you wouldn't.
So that was the option of moving him across where you're seeing, boom, there he is.
Does Pelican Pete have the same features on both sides of the statues?
Yeah, he looks the same on all, all around.
So for tonight's sake, the council just recognized Pete's got to be moved and you know that's got to be moved. And the window house goes away. So they can plan, you know, plan that much further into the process.
That window house almost killed me several times.
They used to go around, right?
It's still
We used to swing on that wall every time until it started slipping.
And they still do, they try to.
Well, it doesn't move anymore.
It moves.
But plus the fact that we've got to get that stuff all underneath there out of there, he's just got to go away.
Did we jump ahead of the sludge, excuse me?
Disposal area.
Well, kind of because of the pictures. Disposal area.
So one of the things that they were talking, that we talked about when we met with Mindot was all of this excavation, or the, all the dredging that happens in the water, all that fill, if there's some place in the city that that could all go, or what we would end up doing with that. That's still, that's still something that we were trying to figure out, think about.
We haven't found it at home for it yet.
No.
We need to know the makeup of it.
Well, we, we're going to, we're going to get it tested.
Because that way, I mean, farmers can take it, anybody can take it.
Yeah, egg land.
We're going to test, so that's one of the things we're going to do, have to do the drawdown.
Okay.
So we might be able to take and apply it to city farmland someplace potentially. Depending on what, and what it is, otherwise it might have to get disposed of.
Market it, Pelican Pete's potting soil. What, what month of the year would that dredging place, take place?
Do you think late, late, late fall, early winter? Probably when the, probably when it grows, about four, five months. Now, there's going to be some discussion with contractors and then we'll get their opinions of what they think the best way to do it is, but that'd be my guess right now.
Is that slated for this coming fall or next?
We think it could be done this winter. Here's one, here's one other reason I'm thinking winter is access to the area is pretty limited. We've got basically, I don't know if you want to call it an alley or something to that. Sure the pavement's not very thick, we have heavy equipment, heavy, with heavy loads of rock. And I'm sure you'll have to have, hold the ground before you start hauling rock in there.
The downfall with that is depending on the composition of this material that you dredge out of there, it might have to be something that if we put it on farmland, it's got to be nice then.
Are we going to pile it, stockpile it and dredge later?
Further.
It could be hauled, it could be hauled to a granite pit or wherever, depending on what the composition. If it's contaminated, then, then again, I mean, then it's going to have to go up to a site, a landfill site. There's, I think the closest one there out in North Dakota somewhere. But in past, in past projects, we have not had an issue with, even with some really mucky, some pretty nasty stuff, we haven't had issues with that. And this here, again, it's pretty darn clean, and there's not a lot of ag, there's not a lot of industry above it and everything else, so.
So given the scope of the project and what you've done, I mean, is it a one season deal? I mean, you'll be out of there by, I mean, river will be flowing by spring and fish will be home by June and
Yeah, we'll have to do some, one of the things on there was some of the plantings we have to talk about too. But we'll definitely have to do some more cleanup, you know, after the, after the waters get played. So there'll be some work in the spring for sure. So we'd probably, probably middle of summer before everything looks nice and cleaned up. But yeah, this project would have to be done before that, before you start on the ground, start going again because you want that, if you want to close the ground, working on it, so.
Yeah, and one thing I wanted to mention with that too is that, you know, with the drawdown, the longer you can let that sediment consolidate, the easier it's going to be to move it. So it's going to be not as heavy to move because we're going to be limited in our road restrictions as far as weight, so that's something else to think about.
One of the bigger decisions we want, we need to make is when do we want to start that?
So in talking about the drawdown, I've already, we have that permit to do that. So I've already applied for the permit and I'm just waiting to hear and get the permit to do the drawdown. And then what'll happen is, you know, we'll just work with, with the DNR and start bringing it down a little bit at a time. And working with Brian to do that. And, and start as soon as possible, basically, start bringing it down a little bit, let it set whatever. And for two reasons, number one, we know that when we drew it all down as fast as we did last time, there was an order there. And if we just kind of trickle it down a little bit as we go, to a certain extent, that should eliminate any potential orders because it'll all dry out or dissipate as we turn down slowly. And at some point, we'll, we'll get to a point where it's down low enough so they can start kind of looking at how the river takes shape in the next steps. So, excuse me, the drawdown, once I get the permit, will start happening. And we plan on getting somewhat of a press release, something, you know, that lets the community know that it's happening too so they can just kind of be aware that it's coming down and not worry about what's going on, so.
How long before you receive the permit?
I don't know for sure, I don't know how long that process typically takes. And I know Julie Odom's not on, so I submitted it last week, so, and she's the one that, that some, proves it at some point, so.
I did talk to her, Dawn, and she, she does have it, she's had something else come up before, but that's the next on her list of her things.
So it should be soon.
The upper consideration for dredging upstream, that's just a dead end street right there that ends in the river, right? I mean, that's pretty accessible for any kind of dredging, potentially anytime.
You talked about, yeah, you're talking about the, the water in the water? Yep, yep, exactly where we're thinking.
And I know that, that water's not very deep, I go in there a lot.
That's where I clean up there.
Well, that's right.
Irrigation pump.
We can start that dredging before the, the injury.
It's firm enough in there.
I think the biggest thing is, like when we start the drawdown, it could be middle of summer and it might not look that appealing. Just so people are aware of that, but it's, it's natural. It's going to be that way for, you know.
When you say gradual, how much do you mean by gradual?
You know, we can try taking down an inch a day, but whenever we try to raise and lower those dams, gates, we've, we've run into issues before. So we'll do it as gradual as we can, I mean, obviously, but we have had cable break and
I think the drawdown schedule and how fast we do it would be something that we have to talk with the DNR.
Right.
How fast they want it to come down so that they can meet the timelines and, you know, Rick can meet the timelines and what they want to try and accomplish as a drawdown.
The big thing there too is always the threshold of where the water levels are at. You know, if we're running high with otter tail water right now and stuff too, you, you, and also in the spring with, with fish spawning and everything else, this is the time of year fish are spawning, you also want to make sure that you're not sending too much water down or what you're doing, and other times, if you have a problem, then all of a sudden you shut water off because something happened and they shut water off. Now you're exposing potential fish that had spawned and now you've got, so typically, a lot of, a lot of those permits is always right around end of May, first part of June is when, when a lot of those permits go. But in this, in this situation, if it's a gradual one too, like, you know, it could be earlier too, so.
I know communication or lack thereof could be a big problem with any project. So when the city wants to do something, do we run things through Houston Engineering or can we go right to the DNR or how's that handled?
I don't know, we're all working pretty tightly here, so.
I mean, just so everybody knows what's going on at the same time.
I think in that permit, it, it'll state that before you start to do it, you have to notify, because it's a DNR permit, I think you got to notify Julie or whoever and then that, and that triggers it, so.
I don't know if this is something that the city's interested in, but we just finished a conversion on the Lake Carlos outlet dam. And that was one that, there were a lot of eyes on it. And we, we made a flyer that we, I made it and we put up just kind of showing what the project was and why we were doing it. And, and they found that really helpful in that people, you know, out and about knew what was going on and, and what was going to be happening there. So if that's something you guys are interested, I can draft something like that for you.
I think that'd be very good.
Yeah. Got something forward with the kiosk at the park or something like that.
Yeah, great.
Okay.
One page press.
Okay, which bullet point we on now?
Well, you know, I think you guys have covered, I mean, we've talked a little bit, all of them, the drawdown timeline will be set yet. But riverlot plantings and then if there was any questions for, Rick might have for the legal work that Greg, Greg is doing on or anything like that. Is all we got left. So the plantings, Amanda?
Yeah, so I did, was able to find some, some non-lesard money because we can't spend lesard money on private property without an easement. I did talk with some of our fishery staff and we, we do have some money we can, we can spend on planting on private property without an easement. And so we can, we can get either native grass mixes or, you know, the SWCB trees. And so I guess what I'm thinking is, is maybe we work with the same list that Greg used for the abstracts and send out some type of letter, I think it would need to come from the city, but again, I would be willing to draft that up and meet it and see if there's any interest in native grass mixes or trees. We do have a limited budget, so it'd be, you know, those that come first would, would, um, get it, I guess. So I don't know if that's something you want to move forward with soon or, I mean, because as soon as this drawdown starts, it's going to start vegetating. There's, I'm sure there's a seed base there, so people should be aware of that too.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea to send, send me a letter and, and we'll look at it to send out. It makes sense to send it to the list of people that Greg has already talked about abstracts. Obviously, there's a few on there that, that don't abut the river that were on that list, but we can identify who should be getting the letters and who shouldn't.
Right, and I think maybe if we put a deadline on, you know, submitting their interests, that way we can kind of figure out if we have enough for everybody or if we need to parse it out or if it's first come, first served. I mean, we can talk about that in our team meetings too, but I'll start with the letter.
I've had somebody ask me a question of when they could expect their abstracts back? Apparently, they had to turn in their abstracts.
Mr. Larson?
Yeah, I've had a couple of calls too. I think it really just depends on the information, you know, this collective group needs. I have reviewed all the abstracts that I've received as far as it relates to their legal descriptions and to give everyone a heads up. The purpose of that was to determine, you know, those that have lots adjacent to the river, if the river channel changes, does their property extend to the water's edge or does it stop short in some situations? And from what I've reviewed at this point, I've looked at sixteen separate legal descriptions that would be applicable and potentially impacted by the project. And ten of them rely, have legal descriptions that rely upon the water's edge. So for those individuals who have legal descriptions that have a boundary on the water side that relies upon the water's edge, their boundaries are going to be naturally extended or shortened depending on where, wherever the river is. Now, because when people settled in the early days, it was usually around rivers, that's where you have older descriptions. So there's six of them that are all, I think, within the original platte of Pelican Rapids that, that have distances, but it doesn't necessarily say to the river's edge. So technically, unless it's surveyed, if you have a hundred foot, I'll use this as a drawing real quick. River. So you got the river there, council, can you see that? Okay, I'm going to draw one lot. And let's say that's the lot. Do you guys see that rectangle? If it's a dimension that says 100 feet east and west, 200 feet north and south, well, if 200 feet north and south stop short of the river, well, then they don't own it. I mean, most folks, of course, when they buy property, whether it's on any body of water, a lake or a river, assume that they own to the river shore, but that's not always the case, especially with some of the older descriptions that don't utilize the reference to the shoreline, where they rather just reference a specific distance. And Rick could probably speak more to that, too, based on his experience, but for the most part, for those in the community that are wondering if the river channel narrows, is there going to be a situation where there's a gap between our lake, our river lot that we thought we purchased and the actual shoreline? In most cases, I can say right now that that's not going to be the case, but there are a few cases where additional investigations warranted for some of the real old legal descriptions that were created back 100-plus years ago when the city was first incorporated.
So if the property owner didn't own it, who would own it? DNR?
Yeah, you know, it all depends.
Maybe potentially, whether it's in the city, too, so it could be city property.
It could be, and that's where the additional work is needed, because it could be owned by, you know,
But it could be my-
-great-great-great-grandfather who platted the property, but didn't include the strip that now is between the lot and the river. Technically, he would still have fee title to it, and it'd be a matter of just cleaning that up. Ultimately, most property owners are not going to be at risk of losing it to some other third party. Worst-case scenario for anybody who buys a piece of property, whether it's on a piece of, on a lake or a river or whatever, or if you buy it in town for that matter, there's things that are out of your control that could happen in the future that dictate, you know, some changes that are, that are kind of, those practical changes that affect property. So I don't anticipate, really, anybody being in a situation that can't be overcome.
That strip of property, could that be conveyed to the adjacent property owner?
It can be, but the question becomes who owns it, to determine who needs to convey it. So I think Rick maybe just mentioned it, the city could own it. It could be owned by, you know, one of the first owners, you know, R.L. Frazi, or some of the others that bought a bunch of property that ended up being the City of Pelican Rapids. It still could technically be in their name.
Okay.
And there'd be no question that even though there might not be record title rights for those individuals that have property abutting the river, they certainly have superior rights over those that do have record title rights, just because of the nature and practical use and just general real estate laws that affect these types of situations. So there is some additional work needed. So Mr. Ballard said, "I'm getting calls because I want my abstracts back." I've received one call, and what I'm going to be doing is, for those individuals reaching out to me, I'm going to tell them for now, unless they need it because they're selling the property or refinancing it or whatever, I'd like the city to retain control of them for probably at least another 30 to 60 days, but assure them that it will always remain under the city's control and that they have the right to pick it up at any time. So that's what, that's the message I've been trying to communicate to those that have reached out to me. So Kevin, if you hear of somebody, you can have them call me or stop by, or I'll give you my cellphone number, and they can call that, too.
I got it. I've been giving that out all the time.
That's fine. So that's about all I have. So there's additional investigation that would be warranted, plus there's probably two or three at-lease property owners that didn't respond. So, but for all intents and purposes, I think we really have a good snapshot, knowing that most of the property owners aren't going to be affected from an ownership standpoint, and how that information's utilized by the collective group and the entire project, I'll defer to them on that. But I will generate kind of a spreadsheet with regard to my findings and circulate that, probably via email to the city and everybody else.
Thank you.
So then, Rick or Amanda, is there anything else you guys need today, or do you basically, based on the talking points that we identified, have everything you need to move forward, whatever you're going to move forward with?
So was there consensus on the mill?
Yeah, the mill's going away.
Okay. And then we don't know for sure yet about Pelican P.
We know, we know, okay, we'll reassess where he needs to go at some point.
That's my only question, Eric. Do you have anything?
No, I'm, uh, very satisfied. Thank you very much, council.
Well, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amanda, for joining us online. Howard?
Yeah.
Hannah?
Rick.
Thank you all. Okay, we'll move on. Item number eight, city legal services discussion. Don, you wanted to speak to that?
Yes. Basically, and Mr. Larson have an opportunity to address the council, too, but basically, I met with Attorney Larson, and he informed me that he is retiring from city legal services, or city attorney work. So previously, the city council had, at one point, we were, we had a legal services committee put together, and it was consisting of myself, or Councilman Strand, and also Councilman CJ Hall, who's no longer around. And so we know with Greg's announcement that we're going to have to put an RFP together and start looking for another city attorney, and so I just kind of want to throw it out to the city council. If you guys want to appoint another person to this group, I did talk to Councilman Strand, and he's still going to serve on that committee as well as myself. And if you guys want to appoint one more person, so we can get moving, and we'll have to, you know, do some things, kind of short-order, try and put something into place. It'll take a RFP that we send out to whatever legal firms we want to do that to, and try and solicit some information from them or proposals.
So any volunteers here this evening? Come on, show those hands. What if you don't get one, then what?
Then Councilman Strand and myself will call, or without you.
Or we'll appoint someone else.
No volunteer, basically?
Really, what it's going to amount to is, you know, we need to meet, get an idea of, you know, what direction we want to take as far as services and how we want to do it, and then I can work to put up, you know, one meeting, and then I can work to put some type of proposal together. Once I have a draft of something, we meet again, and when we think we've got what we want, we'll bring it to the council.
Two or three meetings? So is there any motion to appoint anyone? Is there a motion to appoint anyone? I see none. So the committee will be composed of Councilman Strand and Administrator Solder?
Be a whole lot easier scheduling meetings.
Okay. Anything else?
Uh, no. So with that, you know, I just give off Greg Larson, Attorney Larson, an opportunity just to address the council with the announcement, so to speak.
They already made the notes, but...
Yeah, well.
Where are council, John, Danielle? As Don mentioned, you know, from a timing standpoint, Don and I had recently gone over some things that just need some I's dotted and some P's crossed, which I'll be squaring away. From a timing standpoint, I think it's a good time, because there's really nothing, you know, active in as far as, like, any sort of court-related actions going on that require immediate monitoring. I know, obviously, we have the dam project, but those things are compartmentalized, in my opinion, that are easily transitioned to another attorney. I want to do whatever I can to assist with the transition of the files. I have maybe 10 to 16 banker's boxes of city files dating back to 19, probably, '72 in my office. I'm not sure, you know, those should be in the custody, I suppose, of the city. I don't know if there's any space here where those could be temporarily stored. And I would deliver all those, free delivery on those. But it's a situation where I didn't mean to spring my personal transition to make it an inconvenience for the city, but sometimes those things happen as a result of opportunities and just changes in our lives. But I wanted to, and I asked Don if this would be appropriate, and he made me feel comfortable doing so, is I wanted to sincerely thank, you know, the mayor, the council, Danielle, Don, all of you, giving me the opportunity over the last 15 years or so to serve the council. I hope, for the most part, it went well from my perspective. I've always appreciated it, and I never took it for granted, being able to have the opportunity to serve the city. I've enjoyed it. I've learned a lot regarding things that I didn't know 15 years ago that I do know now, at least according to me, and I consider it a privilege. I know whoever does the work, there's compensation, there's billings to the city, but to me, it was always more than that. It was just being able to have a relationship with the city that I live in, and that's really been very, very important to me. So I really wanted to thank the council, and Danielle, and you, and Don, and all the other staff and former council members I had an opportunity to work with throughout the years. So I'm not leaving town anywhere. I, Don has my cellphone number, and it's not that I'm going to drop off the face of the earth when I leave those doors tonight, because I'm still working on some things that need to be tied up for the city. My new position begins on May 3. It's going to be out at Lake Region Electric, and even past May 3, there's going to be some activity that kind of bleeds over past that date to where I still will be available in the evenings to be able to continue to connect those dots. And I know it's a small committee in terms of what the plan is for the transition, but if there's ever any interest of connecting with me, and I know the council and Don and Danielle and most people here maybe are familiar with what other cities have done, whether it be flat-rate contracts with attorneys, hourly rates, I mean, there's so many different ways to go about it now, but I know there's a lot of good law firms and a lot of good attorneys in the area, and I know that the city will be in good hands. So again, I really, I'm not, I really, to my core, appreciate serving the council, but being able to serve this city, and it's been a pleasure, and I enjoy living here, and I want to live here for many years, and I appreciate the service that the council's provided to this community for so many years, and thanks to the staff for everything that they've been able to do and put up with me in terms of, hey, Greg, when are you going to get that to me? I know there's been challenges and things, but that happens, I suppose, over the course of 15 years, but I really am going to miss the city and the relationship that I've built with it. So thank you for letting me just express my personal thoughts and concerns. So mayor?
Thank you, thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number nine, city personnel. Danielle is going to speak for that.
Danielle doesn't want to speak to this.
Understand why.
So I was notified last week that one of my employees is quitting. She accepted a position at the school, so I am looking for a new utility billing clerk. We do have the ad ready to go and stuff, so we can hopefully get the position filled as soon as possible, but...
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
So it's just a FYI, council, we need to hire.
That's a man.
Okay, thank you.
A gentleman, right?
Yeah. The school, blame the school.
Let's go down to item number 13, city hall sign. You said, Don?
I put it in front of you guys, a picture of the Park, or Lake Region Professional Building sign up on the side of the building here, and I was contacted by Dakota Smiles, Bethany, and she would like to know if the council would entertain the idea of her using that sign, or part of the sign, basically, similar to us having that industrial park sign and, you know, kind of a leasing space, and so she'd be wondering, would the council be receptive to the idea of figuring out a lease-based agreement with her on taking, you know, a portion of this sign, half of this sign, all of this sign, whether you guys are willing to provide for her. She's got a sign company she's working with, and based on how much space you would feel comfortable with, would dictate how, you know, the design that she puts together up there. I know Dr. Gottenberg, at one point, was interested in doing something with that same sign and the same request, just to get more visibility on Highway 59 is what they're looking for. He never came forward with it, but she is very interested.
So the verbiage of Lake Region Professional Building would stay there?
Well, you know, really, that can go away any time.
Yeah.
But, you know, it's just a matter, we never covered it up. The bottom part of it, we had city hall with an arrow, and we were upstairs for that period of time. So really, the whole thing needs to be redone. If, you know, it can be, if she wants the top part of it, cover up the Lake Region Professional Building with whatever she gets put together, and at some point, whatever happens upstairs, the sign might change. I told her, you know, there might be a, yes, we'll do, you know, city council will do this, but it might have to be something, let's say, upstairs becomes another business or a series of businesses to where that sign is going to be used for multiple, then the whole sign might have to be redone, and she was fine with that. She would just like to find out if there's something she can do now as she gets that business ready to go.
This would be to her expense?
Yeah, it's similar. I told her it'd be similar, potentially similar to what we've got up there at the industrial park. She'd have to pay for the graphics that go up there and the mounting of it and everything else, and she understands that. The question would be, at what rate, you know, so when we look at that agreement, this is obviously a much larger sign. I think it was about, she had a flyer with it, a four-by-eight, basically. And up there in the industrial park, you know, we were charging $150 per year for one by eight, if you took, eight by eight, it was $300. For every one foot of the height, it was $150. So technically, if you bought four up there, $100, potentially, or $600, whatever my math is right.
But there's no power to this, is there?
There is no power to that, unlike up there, so, you know, good point. I mean, what do you guys think would be fair, just depending on how much space, if she wants the whole four-by-eight or, you know, a two-by-eight or whatever, you know, how do you want to price it since it isn't electric, or you want me to just try and work with her on something that you think is fair, or what?
So she's aware that if we have an occupant upstairs, the sign will change, and her, whatever she, you know, creates may change also?
Well, it may change, or it depends, because she's not looking to have the whole, you know, eight feet by, or nine feet by eight feet. She just wants a portion of the top half, bottom half, whatever you're willing to do. I mean, I think for present, she'd probably prefer to put something over the Lake Region and get the top half for more exposure to them. We didn't get into that. We just were talking. She'll take whatever space you guys will allow her to take.
Should she throw any money figures at you?
Does she want lighted, Don?
She does. We can talk about that. I don't know, I don't know if there's power to that. If there is, maybe it'd be simple to get some type of lighting system on there. I don't know. She's basically open during the day, so I think she's more concerned about daylight visibility.
I would use a template of the industrial park, you know, proportionately, and then come up with a proposal.
Okay. I'll give with her and put something together, and we'll iron some type of lease agreement that the council could consider. She was just wanting to know, would you guys entertain doing that, because she's got a sign company working on it. I'll give to her. I'll give to her.
Is this coming back to the council or not?
It will. You guys will approve the agreement if it's ironed out. I'll just, like you said, I'll use the template of the industrial park one.
Probably year at a time or whatever.
That's, we'll work.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Second. Or second?
Second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing not all in favor, second, if I was saying aye?
Aye.
All the same? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 14, planning commission update. Councilman Ballard.
We've been working on a ordinance for accessory structures, so that will be in your packet for the first meeting in May. So just kind of a heads up, make sure you read it.
Yeah.
Give us your ideas, and then it'll be presented at the first meeting in May.
Okay. Is there anything I should look at that would be similar to what you're talking about?
Look at the ordinance.
Like, is there something, well?
What do you mean?
Well, that would mean that it wasn't approved.
Okay.
There might be something similar outside of the city.
Okay, thank you.
Is that what you meant?
Buildings or?
No, what a shed in the back, right? Storage.
But currently, there isn't an ordinance that really deals with accessory buildings, like a shed or if somebody wanted to put a garage in their backyard. There currently isn't really an ordinance that talks about that, and we've, really the only ordinance or section of ordinance talks about poor building. So we've kind of rewritten that or written a ordinance that deals with accessory buildings.
So it's just to be an ordinance change, we're going to have to go through hearings and?
Yes. Any other questions? That was short.
I told you.
Definitely you did. Item number 10, city administrator report. Don?
Shall we do my first?
Nope. Right here. I was waiting to shut down. I've been waiting for this meeting, saving the agenda and prepping for it. The logistics around the IT part was really interesting because I was trying to share screens and information, and then on the other computer, you know, keep the zoom thing intact, so it worked out. I attended a DNR DAM meeting, and then also a couple of different meetings, virtual meetings that dealt with the 2021 legislative updates, and just kind of watching what the bonding committee specifically has been doing as it relates to the fact that we have a pool request on there. So it was really the House side of the bonding bill and what they were proposing to do. I attended the MIND 2024 Value Engineering Study Virtual Meeting, and then also there was a project meeting, too, for that, the 2024 project, that kind of is what we talked about today. And met with the city attorney regarding the legal services, had a virtual meeting with our 12-county CDA. This is one that we kind of are doing month and now, just a bunch of communities get together and we talk about the programs that the CDA is throwing out there as well as updating. Each city gives a little bit of update on what they're working on, and so some of the information that comes out of that is how the county might be involved again in the money that's coming down from the current federal administration with, as it relates to COVID dollars and relief dollars, and how they might play a role in that and pass things our way or whatever the case may be. Still waiting for a lot of information on that because there's not a lot of guidelines out there. I attended a virtual meeting with the coalition. It's kind of nice, there's a lot of virtual meetings, but it prevents me from having a drive list and get this information. So that side of it's been kind of nice. But that involved, the one with the coalition of greater Minnesota cities involved is public employers and how things are kind of changing, you know, based on, you know, how they see things moving because kind of the effects of COVID in some sense, and also because of some of the stuff the legislature's looking at, as it relates to, you know, medical leave, sick leave, and minimum wage and all that type of stuff, too. Had a conversation with DNR Julie Adlin. She helped me kind of put together that drawdown permit application. There was lots of parts of it that I just didn't know the information, so she kind of helped me put it together. And then I got that thing submitted. I attended a safety committee meeting the other day, had the first union meeting for contract negotiations that kind of started. We've only met once, and they submitted their proposal, and so now it's to the point where, you know, I consider some things and I'll reply to it and continue that process. And we started earlier this year than normal by far with the intent that we'd like to get a settled contract before we do budgets, instead of do budgets and then, you know, deal with the contract negotiation. Attended the board review, met with the mayor, Councilman Foster and Danielle regarding utility rates for water and sewer and going forward, and so we're looking at some things there. And then worked with, attended the planning commission meeting, and then updated their draft ordinance and sent that all out to them so they could basically look at it. Their intent is to meet, I think, in a week or so and have a final draft to present to the city council as Councilman Ballard has stated. With the intent that hopefully through the publishing period, comment period, I should say, and everything else, the ultimate best-case scenario would be that this ordinance is approved and in place by the last meeting in May. Then I attended the senior center board meeting with NSI today and started working towards the process of moving the senior center building into the city. After the court.
Any questions for Don?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I got a question. We heard anything about policemen that we had let go?
No. There are actions that have taken place that really don't, at this point, haven't gotten to the level where it involves any discussion at the city. Most of the discussions are, you know, he's filed a disability claim, and so because of that, the leader Minnesota city, cities who our insurance is provided through, they basically are the ones that are working on all that. At some point, when it needs to, there needs to be city involvement in any of that, if it comes to that, then I'll be provided that information, and then council will have to look at some aspects of it. But a claim has been filed.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Don. Item 11, mayor reports, some of these items mirror what Don just talked about the last couple of weeks. I have attended the River Restoration Project virtual meeting with Don. I also attended Pelican Rapids Police Union Contract Negotiation Meeting with Administrator Solga and Chief Statham on April 22. Tended the Pelican Rapids Local Board Review and Equalization Meeting here at City Hall with the council members and also city staff. Attended Pelican Rapids Utility Rates Meeting with Councilman Foster and Administrator Solga. Met with Administrator Solga to review this afternoon's city council meeting agenda, and then, as Administrator said, we met today with Nutrition Services Incorporated, Local Foods, Local Places, Pelican Rapids Senior Citizens, and also some of the city staff and personnel to look over the senior citizens building, which we are going to be acquiring here shortly. Also authored and sent a letter to 13 state senators and representatives for support of the current funding allocation for the CHIP program, State White Health Improvement Partnership Program, that Patrick Hollister works with, and they've been instrumental with the Local Foods, Local Places project here in Pelican Rapids. That concludes my report. Any questions?
Thank you.
Other questions?
Yes.
I heard that there was police contract negotiations. Last time I checked, I was on the portfolio with the police department, so I would ask that in the future I be notified.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Move to adjourn.
No, no, wait a minute. We haven't asked it.
Asking out.
Well, seeing no other persons on the seat, it's a motion to adjourn.
She moved.
Motion second. All in favor, second, if I was saying aye? All the same? Meeting adjourned.
Okay. Well, will we score any plans?